Welcome you all to the Tuesday, February 13th, 2024 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Court. We're glad to have you here today. At this time, I'd like to welcome our Denton County Veteran Service Officer, Paul Bastard. He's going to lead us in our invitations. And our pledges will be led by Kevin Carr, Chief Information Officer. If you'll please stand. I want to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones.
Good morning. Please pray with me. Heavenly Father, in this month of February, I will dedicate myself to deeper devotion, spiritual connection with you. Grant us the strength to pursue practices that bring us closer to you, to your love. May our hearts be receptive to your guidance and our spirit be aligned with your will. Help us build a steadfast commitment to prayer, meditation, enriching our souls, and serving our fellow brothers and sisters. Dear Lord, I'm so happy that it's February. I like this month of love. I like that we celebrate Valentine's Day and focus on love with all the cards, flowers, and so forth. It is said in the Good Book, "Above all, love each other deeply, because love covers over a multitude of sins," from 1 Peter. Dear God, in spiritual observance of February, let your presence be felt deeply. May the observances awaken a sense of reverence and draw us closer to your divine wisdom. Guide us as we observe and reflect on your teachings. From Proverbs 2, "My son, if you accept my words, store up my commands within you, turning your ear to wisdom, applying your heart to understanding. Indeed, if you call out for insight, cry aloud for understanding, and if you look for it as for silver and search for it as hidden treasure, then you will understand the fear of the Lord and find the knowledge of God." Lord, as we join in communal prayers, grant us a sense of unity and togetherness. Let these prayers bring us closer as a community, fostering a collection of sense of faith, harmony, and above all, love for each other. For God so loved the world, he gave us his one and only Son. Be with us all in this courtroom today and throughout eternity. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of the United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to Texas, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Paul and Kevin. Thank you very much. All right, at this time, I'd like to, we have a few people registered for public comments. I'd like to welcome first Mr. Willie Hudson.
Good morning, sir.
Judges and commissioners, my name is Willie Hudson. I live at 623 Newton Street. I, I had to serve in Vietnam back when I had went, went there or was in the military. I didn't have a choice. I was drafted. I was 19 years old, rushed out of high school for a year, scared to death, and I had to go. And I think about that situation now in Commissioners Court and how the people in power, and I don't know, I know you all are there and some people out here are there. But, and I look at the pictures over here and I'm thinking, some of you don't like me. You, you don't know me, but you don't like me. And I don't know which ones you are, because if I knew, then I'd react to you differently. But what you do, what you've done to me, and I fought in Vietnam, scared to death, didn't know why I was there. A young man never left Texas before in my life. And I was over there fighting a war that I didn't know anything about and I didn't know why I was there. It was horrible. So then I asked God, why did I have to go through that? Why? Why? Why do I have to go through what I'm going through now where the Commissioners, I don't know which ones of you, but it seems like all of you, because you agree with it. You won't do just this basic thing. Let me have freedom of access, which is already there, but was taken away from people like you and the ones that's on this wall from me illegally. And yet, and you five, and I don't, again, I don't know which ones, because you won't put it on the agenda. That's your saving space. You won't let me have access to that cemetery. And I asked God, well then, what, what is right, God? Why don't you deal with them? He told me, I am dealing with them. He said, just not like you want me to deal with them. I'm dealing with you too, he said. So I say, I don't know why you won't put it on the agenda. I don't know which ones of you really feel towards me and my skin color and my heritage in a negative way. I don't know. All I know is all five of you have voted and continue to vote to not let me have this issue put on the agenda. I also know-
Mr. Hudson, your time is up.
Time is up. Okay.
Thank you, sir. Next is Stephen Dillenberg.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
So, my name is Stephen Dillenberg, 1004 Abbott's Lane here in Denton. So again, for people who weren't here last time, this is my brother. Served in our military, three tours in the Middle East and one to Korea. His wife is dead from cancer. And so I'm here on his behalf today. And also for all of us, because if cancer is cured, we should have our doctors telling us what the cure is, right? Can we at least agree it not much? Yeah? Yeah? Looking down at the dais. Don't give a crap? Okay, cool. Well, I'm gonna put this here so y'all don't forget. So I am from here. Here's, here's Argyle High School. All right. So I'm, I'm not somebody from out of town. Graduated from Argyle, graduated from UNT, have a Bachelor of Science in Biology, double minor in Chemistry and Spanish. All right. And so, guys, I got nothing but love for y'all and for our government. And we need y'all to intervene in a few areas where we've had some issues. I've asked for some help from y'all. Sir, your wife had cancer. If she had cancer and there's a cure for that, does that kind of make you a little bit upset? And you had to go through that? Well, so my brother's wife got triple negative breast cancer, stage four. By the time it was diagnosed, she reported a lump in her breast to her doctor three years before they acknowledged that it was worst case scenario and it had spread to her liver and lymph system. Five years ago, the cancer that she got was 97% survivable at five years. So she should be alive today. She died 18 months after she got it because that first treatment that had been developed didn't work for her. So then they put her on the red poison, is what they call it. So MD Anderson, for those not close to the cancer field, is known as Darth Vader among those who are, because that's where you go to, and they suck out the last of your life force and all your money. And then your family's left to pick up the pieces. So that red poison that they gave her, it was $14,000 per dose. It was administered through a pump in her back. Made her sweat red, made her urine red, and it made her tears red for three days after taking it. And that one only had a 5% chance of survival, and that one stopped working that July. She died the next April. Come to find out, there's a lot of different things that are cheap and off patent that can be bought at Walmart for $20 per month's cancer treat. And my brother can't get a pre-off from his insurance company so they can save that money over the weekend. And I've presented evidence to you guys that should have called y'all to action and you hadn't. I'm asking y'all, please, for the love of God, do something and actually act like you love God. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry for your loss. Thank you for being here. And next is Melinda Preston.
Good morning.
Good morning, judgees, commissioners. Hey, I just wanted to, I put something on your desk. It's a resolution. It's a resolution calling for additional measures to secure the border, stop the invasion, and protect our communities from imminent danger. There are 50 counties that have already signed this. I would love for us to be one of them. Collin County signed it. I'm with Citizens Defending Freedom, so we have a press release ready to go when we get this in. Signed, all you guys sign it. The one thing that we want to do is let Abbott know that we're here, that we, we believe in closing the border. We, we do believe there's an invasion. We want to support the sheriffs. We want to support the Border Patrol. We want to support the families. I have dear friends that are on the border that are suffering. So I would love for us to be one of the counties that say, hey, guys, we're here for you. We love you. We're praying for you. Denton County is right behind you. So if we could get this on next week's agenda, I would surely appreciate it. So I got it for you guys to read, look through. Guys, I appreciate all that you do. I really do. Thank you for all that you guys do. I know it's a hard job. So y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melinda. All right, next is Chelsea Stallings.
Good morning, commissioners and judge. My name is Chelsea Stallings. I live in Denton, Texas, 76201. Excuse me, I'm trying to not get sick, so I'm going to keep this short. I just wanted to first apologize. Last week, I made it a point to say you guys didn't recognize Black History Month, and you very much did. So I personally want to apologize if I'm wrong. I say I'm wrong. I jumped the gun. I didn't read. So I wanted to say thank you for doing that last week. I did appreciate it.
No problem.
And I am here again with Mr. Hudson today. We are asking for access to the St. John Cemetery. I know that Denton County does have historic black cemeteries under its care in Lewisville and Little Elm. So we are again asking for access to the St. John Cemetery so that we can continue research efforts, but also cleanup efforts to make sure that this cemetery gets the recognition that it absolutely deserves in this county. With that, I just want to say thank you for your time this morning.
They will let you in the cemetery, the private owners? So?
Yeah, there's the, the gate code, and Mr. Hudson has it. I don't personally have it, but it's that whole thing of getting onto their personal property. And when we went last week or the week before, they stopped, they stopped Mr. Hudson and asked him what he was doing there. So there is a little bit of, you know, boundaries and things like that. But it's, it's, it's actually just, you know, if you were to go to like Oaklawn or the Iowf Cemetery or something, you can get in no problem. So it's that same kind of regular access that we're wanting to have instead of not having to go through personal property. And I know that's a whole other issue, which is why we would like to have it on the agenda item and hopefully have even the, you know, Historic Commission from the county or the Office of History and Culture here as well for those conversations. So yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Is this a new one?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, I think I believe I have one more. Donna Wolford, regarding GoZone. Donna?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am.
I requested a GoZone at three minutes after eight this morning, and I'm just now getting to Commissioners Court. As a former GoZone driver, I drove GoZone in 2022. We made between $28 and $34 an hour, and we also paid for the vehicle. I would like the Commissioners to find out exactly where the millions are going to. The current GoZone driver in 2024 has, is making less money, and they're being charged more for the vehicles, and the app is still not right. So I'm standing on behalf of the GoZone driver, who is a contractor, not an employee of our county, and also the disability people like myself who must ride GoZone. So was I any disability-accommodated GoZone? I was. What time did I request it? 8:03. Where was I? Heritage Oaks on bail. I should not be late for Commissioners Court this morning. So Commissioners, will you please have a heart-to-heart with GoZone? Let them know this is not New York City. We have a lot of veterans and people like myself that are counting on this service to get to appointments that we need to go to. And as a county, we want to know, if we have given them millions, why is the app still not right? And we need more drivers for the early morning rush hours, because high schoolers are depending on GoZone too. And that's basically what I wanted to say. Two years later, the GoZone drivers should be making more. They are contractors. If we have three drivers using that same vehicle, that's over, it's almost $400 that in Avis or whoever owns the- in Avis or whoever owns the vehicle is netting from that one vehicle. We have drivers that work from 4:30 in the morning, and they get off slightly before noon. We have drivers that come at 11:00. They get off midday. We have midday drivers that work, and we have drivers that work until 11:00. And we need to take care of the drivers. We had a driver that was attacked, and she was fired. And I would like that driver to get her job back, because she had a right to defend herself, and she had another new GoZone driver in there, and it's not right. We need an emergency button, just like Yellow Taxi has in Dallas, that the Sheriff Department can be called anywhere where a GoZone driver is in distress, and he or she can hit that button, and the Sheriff Department can come and get that person out of their vehicle. So thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, ma'am.
I never said my name. So I am Donna Fay Woodfork, and I speak on behalf of the GoZone driver. And we want to know where are the millions going and why the app has not been updated? Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Donna. Okay. Put that right there. All right, next, let's go to Item 3A, which is approval of a resolution proclaiming February the 13th, 2024, as Texas Food Connection Day. Get any appropriate action, and I want to invite up Tommy Calvert. We just had breakfast together this morning over on the square.
Yes, good morning, Judge.
Good to see you.
Eads and commissioners, and thank you, Judge Eads, for coming and having breakfast with us this morning to celebrate our food connection. On behalf of the Denton County Farm Bureau, we appreciate this opportunity to be with you here today. Food connection is important for our 3,295 farmers and ranchers of Denton County and to all of us. As our great country, state, and county and nation continues to grow, food and fiber are more important than ever. We take this time to connect everyone to those who work tirelessly from daylight to dusk to provide food for all of us. Three times a day, seven days a week. We know how important it is to have enough food to feed our great country. During this food connection, we have a food drive, which we have participation from the County 4H and FFA clubs. They collected over 3,000 items, which we donate to the Food Center. And the farmers and ranchers continue to provide with us with a safe, affordable, and abundant food supply. And I want to thank you for recognizing that and that today with this proclamation. Thank you.
Perfect, good, thank you. I'll go ahead and read this proclamation. This is a court proclamation recognizing Texas Food Connection Day. Whereas it is important that Americans have access to and consume healthful foods containing adequate vitamins, minerals, fiber, and other nutrients, even during challenging economic times, whereas farmers and ranchers are unmatched in their ability to consistently produce an abundance of safe, nutritious, and affordable food, whereas producers confront significant uncertainties, including inclement weather, damaging insects, and other challenges on a daily basis. Whereas Denton County and Texas farmers, ranchers, and others involved in the agriculture industry, working together in an environmentally sustainable way, help feed people here in Texas, our nation, and in other countries around the world. Now therefore be it resolved that the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim February the 13th, 2024, as Texas Food Connection Day, and call upon all Americans to join us in recognizing and reflecting upon the strength of our diverse agricultural industry and in celebrating the benefits of agriculture with appropriate observance and activities done in open court this 13th day of February 2024, upon a motion made by, motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Well, I do want to say that I'm very proud that Denton County still is in the agriculture-producing industry. We are not all paved over. We still have very viable and economically sound agriculture industry here, and a wide variety of products and producibles. So I want to just thank you for being here this morning, and thank our AgriLife team for encouraging the agricultural production across the state. We saw some 4Hers there this morning, the next generation of agriculture leaders. Anyway, I wanted to just thank our members.
We couldn't do it, Judge, without AgriLife, because they bring us into the forefront of all modern technologies. They help us with new programs on how to do a better job producing that food and fiber.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And Denton County is home to the very first female agriculture extension agent, you know, so Edna Trigg.
That's right, absolutely.
So anyway, we have a stork marker over there at the square.
And there are those of us that, I'm a fourth-generation farmer and rancher in Denton County. There are still those of us around that are still trying to produce food and fiber for everyone. It is a little harder, but, you know, we're still out there doing every day what we can to provide for our great country, because we know how important food is for us.
That's right, absolutely. All right, we have a motion, second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries your names. Okay, we'll take a quick picture here. All right. It's amazing when we get that end-of-year report, how much is produced here annually. Let me see, let me try to acknowledge some of our other guests today. Let's go to 13A. 13A is approval of one accepting the, accepting the Denton County Sexual Assault Response Team, SART, 2023 biennial report, and to approving two individuals to the SART and any appropriate action. And who do we have with us today? Would they like to make any presentation regarding our SART team? I know we have several guests here with us today. Is anyone who wants to?
Good morning.
Good morning.
How they all just stopped and let me keep watching?
I know, I noticed that. You're a born leader.
Wrong. Good morning, Commissioner, Judge Eads and commissioners. Thank you so much for having us this morning. I'm Lori Nelson. I'm the Director of Community Engagement at Denton County Friends of the Family. With me are several members of our Denton County Sexual Assault Response Team. We are in year number two officially of having our Sexual Assault Response Team meeting more than quarterly, a little bit more than required by the code. And I was just so thrilled to be able to present y'all the biennial report that's included in your attachments. We did a lot of hard work after beginning and putting the protocol together and getting that out to all of our law enforcement agencies and across the systems, but then meeting with each other and working through issues as they came up, but also learning from each other, learning about the processes by which our victims of sexual assault, when from presenting at the hospital or presenting to law enforcement, all the way through the crime lab, and even cold cases as those hits came up and those cases were investigated. I feel like we all have learned a lot about each other, how to better support one another and have grace with one another, but also how to better support our survivors through the process, so that we can hear them and support them and let them know that they have been heard and believed. And I believe that more than legal justice, the healing process of that is far more important. And justice in its own way will be found. I also have two members that need to be appointed to the SART. Dr. Cara Breeden, you can read her information on the appointment paperwork that she filled out. She is the CEO and founder of the Texas Forensic Nurse Examiners, and that has entered into a contract with HDA Hospitals to provide forensic medical exams to all of the Medical City facilities in North Texas. Prior to that contract in Denton County, there were some issues that happened in 2019, 2020, and the only location for a victim of sexual assault to get a forensic exam was Texas Presby Denton, which did a phenomenal job stepping up to the plate to do all of those exams for us. But we are, we consider ourselves incredibly blessed to be able to have locations closer to a victim's home, that they can walk into Medical City Lewisville, if they live there, and get an exam in that moment. And then also Dallas Hamilton with MHMR is here to be appointed to our SART as per the code.
Perfect. Good. Well, we appreciate all y'all's efforts, and I think that is, it's a very tough subject to deal with, and I know I've heard reports about what a great job y'all do in addressing it. So thank y'all for all that you do and bringing awareness to that. Do we have a motion? I believe we were gonna, we have the two appointees on for executive session, but do we have a motion for, to approve the report? To approve the report? A motion to approve the report by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all. Thank y'all for being here today. Thank you, folks.
I just want to thank you, because, you know, when you're sexually assaulted, not that I have been, but heard about it, and, you know, it's so nice to be able to go in and have someone to actually believe you and work with you, and you be treated with dignity. So I want to thank you all for all that you do. I appreciate it, for you stepping up for the citizens and the people who have been assaulted. Keep up the work.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Very good. Going through here. Let's go back to item number two, the consent agenda members. Are there any items you'd like to pull, or do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? A motion by Commissioner Mitchell?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda, they consist of Item 2A's approval of order-making appointments, Item 2B's approval to enter departmental transfers, Item 2C's approval of payroll, Item 2D's approval to budgetment request 100790 for the juvenile probation department to transfer $7,500 from administrative supplies to repairs and maintenance for various juvenile budgets to cover the cost of providing repairs and ongoing maintenance for the fiscal year 2024. Item 4A is a public hearing today on February the 13th, 2024, to consider and/or approve or take appropriate action for a zoning change request in the Lake Great Roberts Plan in the zoning district. This is ZA2301. This property is our number 1019418, is located in Jakes Lakeview Estates, Block A, lots 1 through 3. This is 6.06 acres. We have a motion to open a public hearing.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the zoning change request there in the Jakes Lakeview Estates subdivision? Anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the zoning change request? Hearing done. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
To close?
Motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
A motion for approval of the item by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is Item 5A, approval of the bill reports, payments from CSCD, community corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT, interest, and DA forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May, good morning.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning. I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
All right. Do we have a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is Item 6A, approval to contract with G2 General Contractors for replacement of all the broken access door panels and installation of access ladders at the Charlie Co. Building in the amount of $247,228.79 through the Texas Air Local Purchasing Systems TIPS Cooperative Contract 211001. In any appropriate action? Chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is Item 6B, approval of the contract with Frontier Waterproofing for removal and replacement of 14 stone benches outside the Denton County Court, spending the amount of $80,000 through the Texas Air Local Purchasing Systems TIPS Cooperative Contract 23010402.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6C, approval of sole source renewal of the jury-plus jury management soft, system software maintenance agreement between Denton County and Jury Systems Incorporated. Any appropriate action? Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6D, approval of purchase and installation of data cabling for network access from Gray Bar Electric Company Incorporated, amount of $91,894.17 through the Omni Cooperative Contract EV2370. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Requested pull Item 6E. That will be pulled for future date.
6E?
What?
6E?
6E.
Yes.
Yes. 6F is approval evaluation committee's recommendation to rank Park Hill as the most qualified architectural firm for the Horn Building County Clerk remodel and the Jail Kitchen Laundry Stucco project. This is RFPQ232745, Architectural Services, miscellaneous facility projects.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 7A, approval of county-wide organizational goals, budget calendar, budget process parameters, and establishing budget priorities for the Budget Office to use when preparing and recommending budget for the fiscal year 2025. We'll go ahead and, good morning, Alejandro. It's already that time of year.
Yes. Yes, sir. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
Yes, well, as you know, every February, we do ask Commissioners Court to approve several items that provide direction to the Budget Office. The first of those items is the Budget Calendar, which does establish several important dates as part of the upcoming budget process. So our intention is to open up the budget application on March 8th, to allow departments to begin working on their initial requests. And departments will have approximately 45 weeks to submit those requests to our office, so that our office can begin working on the, on reviewing those requests, as well as developing our recommendations, so that we can have the information necessary to present to Commissioners Court on July 23rd. So as you can see here, we are proposing to have three separate budget workshops on July 30th, August 6th, as well as August 13th. We are hoping to have all final decisions made by August 13th, so that that can give us enough time to publish the necessary public notices, as well as to hold the necessary public hearings, so that Commissioners Court can vote to adopt the budget and the tax rate on September 10th. So a couple of things that I wanted to mention here is that obviously one of the main differences from last year's calendar is that, you recall last year, we had the recommended budget presentation and one budget workshop immediately following that. So under this calendar, we are proposing to have the recommended budget presentation and then starting the budget workshops the week after that, and having three of them. But one thing I did, I also want to point out is that the recommended budget was prepared and presented in mid-August last year, which meant that it was based off of final revenue numbers. and presented in mid-August, uh, last year, which meant that it was based off of a final revenue numbers. So, um, since we're proposing to have the recommended budget presentation in mid-July, that means it's going to be based off of estimated revenues. Uh, but we are going to come back on July 30th or August 6th at the latest with some, uh, action items for Commissioners Court to reconcile these those, uh, those numbers. And so this next slide is really just for informational purposes. Uh, as the court will recall, uh, we did approve a 5% slide of the pay scale for non-law enforcement positions and a 14% slide of the pay scale for law enforcement last year. And so that was done in an effort to assist with recruitment and retention. So, uh, what you're seeing here is a five-year view of position vacancies as of a January of each year. So if you look on the left-hand side, you'll see that as of January of 2020, uh, approximately 6% of our county positions were vacant at that time. And you'll notice that that number has steadily increased, peaking on January of 2023 with approximately 20% of our approved positions being vacant.
That's all positions?
That is all approved.
Countywide.
Yes, sir. Uh, but you will notice that, uh, as of last month of January of 2024, that number has begun to trend downward. So with approximately 16% of our positions being vacant, um, as of last month. So while that number is, um, still higher than obviously it was looking back in 2020, yeah, it is, it has begun to decline. So, uh, our hope is that as we progress through the fiscal year, that number will continue to go down. Uh, yes, that includes the DOs. I think, um, uh, between September, uh, to January, so just a few months into the new pay scale system, I think they've been able to increase the, their filled DO1 positions by about 18%. So a lot of those are, uh, those DO1 positions that they're beginning to be able to fill. Uh, and so I also want to mention a few, um, significant impacts that we're aware of as of right now. So while obviously we haven't opened up the budget application yet and we don't know of any major impacts based off of departmental requests, uh, we are already aware of, um, of several impacts that are going to be hitting next year's budget. Uh, so, uh, as you know, any increase to the pay scale or any sort of merit increase, uh, which we've historically referred to as a COLA increase, does have a significant impact on the budget. Uh, for your reference, every 1% merit increase or COLA increase hits the budget at approximately 1.4 million. That's for salary and benefits. Uh, every 1% slide of the pay scale that the county does, where we increase the minimum and maximum starting, uh, maximum salaries by 1% is an impact of approximately 1.6 million. So as an example, if the Commissioners Court were to approve a 5% slide of the pay scale, that will have an impact of approximately 8 million for salary and benefits. Uh, we also don't know as of yet if we're going to have, uh, any increases in the cost of providing employees with, uh, their current level of benefits. Uh, that's not referring to increasing the type of benefits that employees receive. That's simply referring to providing the current level of benefits. So currently, the county is contributing 26 million annually for our employees' health insurance. Uh, later this year, as we begin to have our internal meetings and discussions and reviewing, uh, medical claims from the, from the prior year, we'll be able to determine if that, uh, health insurance budget needs to increase for, uh, for FY 2025. Uh, the county is also contributing 19 million annually, annually towards the employees', uh, pensions. Uh, so as you know, um, the county does match every $1 that an employee puts in by $2.25. Uh, so we, uh, the county matches our retirement benefits up to 225% or it's a 225% match up to 7% of an employee's salary. Um, and so, uh, we also don't know if that cost is going to increase or not, but, uh, we will have those internal meetings later this year where we begin to meet with the TCDRS. And as I mentioned in the past, that really is, uh, whether that cost increases or not is dependent on also a number of different factors, like market volatility has a, um, is a big, uh, determining factor as to whether that retirement rate increases or not. The county also is in the middle of, um, transitioning over to a new ERP software system to replace our, uh, currently legacy system. And so this is what, uh, this basically includes our financial management system, our HR module, our payroll module. So, uh, our legacy system is nearing obsolescence. And so, um, so we are looking to transition over to a new ERP software. And of course, it is a subscription-based software. So as of now, we are looking at an approximate, uh, impact to the FY 2025 budget of about 800,000. Uh, but we'll have a much better idea of what that final amount is, um, hopefully towards the end of this month. Uh, we, we will also be seeing a new district court come online, uh, January 1st of 2025. And so we are going to be needing to, um, to budget for, for the prorated cost of that new district court. And so FY 2026, we'll see the full annual impact of, uh, the full, of that new district court. Uh, so right now, we're estimating that impact to be about 800,000. Um, but when, when we present the recommended budget, uh, we'll show a, uh, more detailed breakdown of, of the costs associated with that, uh, new district court. Um, and also, as you'll recall, every year, we do try to increase funding in the Permanent Improvement Fund as much as possible to assist with funding, uh, capital projects. Uh, so our hope is to be able to increase that Permanent Improvement Fund budget by at least a million for FY 2025. Um, and, uh, based on the, based on requests received from the past, um, few years, we know that we're going to be receiving a lot of requests based on the increase, the continued increase in, of, uh, population within Denton County. So that may come in the form of, uh, new position requests or, uh, an increase in, um, operating supplies from departments. And when you look at it in just one, and in just one department, it may not look like a lot. But when you combine all of the requests across the county based off of an increase in demand, that can also have a significant, a significant impact on the county budget. Uh, but that's, um, a little bit of what we're expecting to see on the expenditure side. Uh, so I'm going to pass it off to our county auditor, Jeff May, and he's going to, uh, cover a bit about the revenue side before, before I wrap up the, uh, presentation.
Thank you. Yeah, I will pay for this stuff.
Hello, Judge and Commissioner. I had been asked to give you a briefing of what I expect to happen, um, in 2025 with our revenues. So, uh, anyway, first I want to start, a lot of these slides you saw when we adopted the 2024 budget, and this is one of those. This is our eight sources of, uh, funding for, uh, the county. And it's, uh, property taxes, motor vehicles, intergovernmental revenues, fees, fines, interest, miscellaneous. And then we dip into fund balance in various funds. Uh, most of those are special revenue funds to, uh, fund the budget. And how do you, how do you change it? There it is. It's hidden. Okay. And, uh, you see on this slide, uh, property taxes is 75% of our revenues. So for us, it's all about tax revenue. Um, you see the other revenues make up about a quarter of our budget. So, uh, anyway, uh, I'm going to spend a lot more time on property taxes because that's, um, important, as you can see from this slide. And, uh, this slide you saw in budget last year, except for the 2023, these are actuals instead of estimates. But, uh, this is, uh, um, what it looks like. Uh, you, I wanted to talk about taxes first. And you see, uh, when I estimated 2023, um, that number was, uh, just around 300 million. And we ended up collecting 319 million, as you see. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit more in a minute. In 2024, I expect that 297 million to be much higher also. And I'll talk about that, why that's going to happen in a minute. Um, and I'm going to go through each of these, but we can come back to this slide if you want to. But I have some more slides with trends that give the same information. First of all, property taxes. Um, this is a 10-year trend of our tax collections. And, uh, I want you to notice in 2022 and 2023, we kind of had a little spike. And that was a result of the, um, the, the tax freeze for, uh, 65 and older and, um, disabled. And what happened is the way the tax, uh, the no new revenue tax calculation was changed as a result of it. And it, uh, um, the, uh, rate is determined on a worst-case scenario according to the property tax code or to the tax code. And, uh, what happened is the, uh, deferrals had to be taken out when the tax was calculated. And as a result, we're getting, uh, we're collecting more than we anticipated. Now that we see how much more we're collecting, what I'm planning on doing over 2024, 2025, probably the next four years, is to kind of ease us back in and kind of estimate actually higher than, uh, than the, uh, I guess the levy, uh, that will be issued because I do expect, uh, deferrals to be collected. And, uh, 22, 22 and 2023, we collected about 95% of them. And, um, and they were calculated based on zero when we estimated the tax.
Jeff, what will that do to the no new tax rate?
Um, that will, actually it has no impact on the tax rate other than maybe the rate that you adopt because you'll have a, uh, you'll see more collection, so you may want to lower the rates or, uh, whatever you want to do with it, so. And, uh, I wanted to go over our collections again. Uh, our tax office is very good at collecting. As you see in the middle column, the percent of levy, uh, um, it's always 98% or higher. Our citizens in Denton County pay well on their taxes. I thought it was interesting in 2020, in this middle column, you see 99.9% in 2020, which I figured that would be the lowest year. But, uh, I thought that was interesting. But, uh, I also wanted to point out at the last two columns on this. This is our, uh, collections, I'm sorry, the third from the end is our collections for our subsequent year. So, uh, this is one of those, there's a lot of areas where we collect more than the levy. And one of these is we collect for prior years, which is not included in the current year's levy. There's other areas that we collect more too, other than deferrals that I mentioned. But we have, uh, uh, protests from, mainly from court cases that are unresolved. Usually when we adopt the budget, it's based on 95%, uh, by law, 95% are hired to have a certified, uh, uh, I guess certified.
Role?
Yes. And, uh, so, uh, that's, uh, one of the areas. Uh, we also have things like, uh, aggregate exemption losses. And when that happens, the, uh, the property owner has to pay five years' worth of taxes. So, uh, so these can, uh, add to our, uh, collections, uh, much more than what, uh, the levy is. And, uh, here's a, uh, 10-year history of our adjusted taxable values. So now, um, I am not an expert on, um, appraisals, but, uh, here the, uh, adjusted taxable value, you see in 2022 and 2023, we had a big surge in values. And, uh, a big part of that was we had, uh, our, um, property values just went up. And, uh, and next year, uh, if I pull up my crystal ball, I expect that to pretty much remain flat as far as existing properties. But that's what, uh, I'm guessing. Again, I'm no expert on appraisals. But that's kind of what I'm anticipating. We haven't, uh, heard yet from the Central Appraisal District, which we expect to hear pretty soon on their preliminary numbers on what they expect to happen. So, um, and, uh, this is, uh, this was in your, uh, presentation last year, but this is just the, uh, home values, average home value, uh, each year in the past 10 years. And you see in 2022 and 2023, we had a big surge in values. And that's what I was talking about again with the, with the, uh, uh, tax, uh, tax collections. And this one, last year, this one really shocked me. But, uh, this is our new construction. And, uh, you see in 2023, we had $9.2 billion of new construction. And I really didn't think that was possible, but, uh, it really surged up. And, um, and I was kind of banking on 5 billion. And, and I think this next year, uh, that's really where, um, if we have a, um, increase in our collection or I guess, uh, this is where we're going to get it because I expect the existing values to be flat. But hopefully we'll have another big surge. I'm not sure. We looked at last year what caused it, and it was across the board, all different properties. And they were all bigger. We did add some big properties like the, uh, the, um, PGA headquarters, uh, the Omni is what I'm trying to say, uh, that opened up and added about half a billion to the tax roll. But, uh, anyway, we had, uh, but across the board, it was, they were all up by about the same amount, surprisingly.
And Jeff, did you say, do you, do you have any guesstimates on where that'll be this, this year?
I do not. That's hard to, uh, to project because, um, it's, uh, I don't have those numbers flowing into my office and, and since we have.
Well, no, just like if you, what we think, is it going to be another nine, 10 billion dollar thing? Or is it going to be a 5 billion dollar deal?
I do see a lot of construction across the county, so I know it's going to be another good one.
Do we, do we get, do we get any permit information from our cities? I know that from Stephen, I'm sure we.
I do not see it. Uh, maybe I could start, uh, find a way to get that. It's a little difficult in Denton County because we have so many cities.
Sure.
And not a dominant one like most counties do.
Right, right.
So, uh, but, yes.
Jeff, I think that Stephen Belknap is preparing a summary of all developments that are going in to Denton County, most of which are in place in four. But at any rate, um, that might help too, if you get that from him.
Yes. And, uh, the Central Appraisal District, we always have a annual meeting with them, uh, which is coming up soon. And they also, also give a lot of information on this, and that's usually what I bank on.
That's good.
So, so I will get the information. I just don't have it until, usually until they provide it, so.
And, and when, when is that first kind of?
You know when the meeting is. It's usually in, in the March, first part of April.
Okay.
Something like that.
Good.
So, any other questions on taxes? Okay. Um, auto registrations, you see, uh, one thing that, um, COVID did to me is it kind of messed with trends. In this case, um, uh, it really didn't. I expected the, uh, uh, you see, uh, we had a big surge in registrations in 2022 and 2023. And, uh, I'm not sure exactly what caused it. I know there's been a lot of, uh, we tend to have a little slowdown and, and then a pickup because of COVID and, and new vehicles. And, uh, and so there's been a lot of activity that you can see here. And I expect, uh, in 2024, I estimated about the same as 2023. I expect that to be higher. And 2025, I expect it to go up probably by about the same thing.
This is a million people in Denton County.
Yes.
And every household has three to four drivers.
Exactly. And also as we get new businesses, they also add vehicles.
Vehicles, that's right.
And, uh, this one's, you can really see the COVID effect on this one. Uh, this is our intergovernmental revenues. And, um, this, uh, when we budget, we don't include the grant revenues, but when we show the actuals, we do. But, uh, you can see in 2020, we received our carers money. And by the way, we, uh, we don't record the revenue, uh, we don't recognize the revenue until we earn it, which would mean when we spend it. So, so just because we got the money, it's not a revenue until we spend it as far as grants. And so in 2024, um, or really in 2025, I expect us to have a big jump again because, uh, I think we're going to be moving some of the ARPA money over to the general fund, Mifler. Um, our lost revenue, 10 million that we can, uh, claim. There's a couple of more, uh, investment revenue. I need to talk to you about what to do with that as far as ARPA funds, uh, because we can use that for whatever you choose to use it for.
Jeff, if I can, on the, that we, we basically credit it once it's spent? What, what?
Yes, we recognize the revenue, uh, when we earn the funds, which would, in a, in a case of a grant, it's when we spend the money, so.
And what is spending the money?
It means when we write the check.
Okay, so not when it's obligated?
That's right.
It's when it's actually?
That's.
When the checks are.
Correct.
Got it.
Because if we don't, uh, if we don't write a check for it, we don't earn it. We have to send it back.
Got it.
And then, uh, our fees and, uh, this, these fees, uh, are all fees across the county court fees. Most of the county clerk collects most fees and, uh, and, um, you can kind of see the COVID effect on this too. 2021 and 2022, we had a little surge after 2020 was flat. And, uh, but they tend to, uh, if you take that out of account, that tends to be a very slight increase from year to year. So, um, but our fees are not, uh, not something that I expect to have. So, um, but our fees are not, uh, not something that I expect to have a big surge in or anything like that in the next few years. And then fines, um, you can again see the COVID effect on this. In twenty-twenty, we had a big drop in fines. And part of this also is changes in laws. Uh, there was a law or change around, um, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen where it allowed defendants to, um, pay their fines with community service, so that money does not go into, um, the treasurer. And, um, but anyway, uh, so it's kind of been on a downward trend over the last five years. Uh, if, I know, when you, uh, adjust it for COVID, that's, so I don't expect us to have any increase in the fines over the next few years too. So, and then this is, uh, the most shocking slide, I think, on the presentation here. You see, uh, our investment earnings, uh, because we had a, just a surge in, uh, interest rates and, uh, really at the end of twenty-twenty-two, end of twenty-twenty-three, you see the impact that it's had. And this does not include, um, ARPA funds either. So, uh, so, uh, and I do expect twenty-twenty-four, uh, the Fed just left the interest rates the same the, uh, last week when they met. And I kind of expect twenty-twenty-four to be about the same as twenty-twenty-three. It looks like the rates are gonna flatten out. And so, uh, but one thing I want to caution you on is you can see how interests, uh, or investment earnings can fluctuate.
Yeah.
So I've been working with Alejandro on, uh, trying to, when we adopt the budget, to use interest for only one-time expenditure so we don't become dependent on it. And then the rate drops suddenly. So, uh, so we've been working on that, but we do, I do expect, uh, twenty-twenty-four, and it's hard to predict into twenty-twenty-five, but, uh, I, I kind of think that interest rates are gonna start decreasing slightly is what most of the experts are saying.
Jeff, on the, um, the earning on the cares and ARPA-type funds, how does interest earned on those, how does that get calculated? Yeah, is it, it, it becomes earned once we get the interest? Is that right?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay, got it.
So we do recognize that immediately.
Perfect.
And, uh, right now, we are recording the ARPA interest in, uh, the ARPA fund. Probably in twenty-twenty-five at the first quarter, I'll come to you and, and request that we probably move it, uh, to the general fund or something like that.
Got it.
And, uh, right now, um, there's around nine million dollars in investment earnings in ARPA, and we've been earning about six hundred thousand a month.
Hmm.
A month.
There you go.
And you can see in some years, we didn't even earn six hundred thousand the whole year, like twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen.
Those were lean years. Lean years.
And this slide here shows you, uh, all the revenues combined, and you can kind of see, you really see the impact of the intergovernmental revenues in twenty-twenty and beyond. But that's what our revenue trend looked like overall. So, um, anyway, that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Jeff, great job. Great job. All right, Alejandro.
Okay, and so I just wanted to mention a few, uh, just general guidelines. Um, so we are, uh, also requesting that departments continue to communicate clear justification as part of their initial budget requests. That's not just in regard to new requests, but also any current level funding that is being carried over from, uh, one year to the next, as well as including, uh, any supporting documentation where applicable. Uh, performance measures, um, are something that we utilize when reviewing the budgets and, uh, developing our recommendations as well. Um, and one thing that I wanted to mention is that we are also open to providing any one-on-one training that is needed for departments as they, um, go through the initial request process. I know we've had, um, several trainings scheduled and several, uh, trainings that are happening this week, so that is something we're trying to, um, make departments aware of as well. I know that we do offer a pretty comprehensive budget manual that provides step-by-step instructions in regards to navigating the budget application, but I also know that it doesn't cover everything, uh, that is, uh, required when, um, going through the initial request process. Um, one other thing that I wanted to mention also is that we do ask that departments tie in their, uh, budget requests with the county-wide organizational goals and, uh, Commissioner's Court priorities. Uh, and obviously, one of the, uh, major priorities of the court is to pursue a fiscally conservative budget, and so we do request that, uh, departments submit, uh, budget requests that are conservative in nature. And, uh, regarding budget appeals, um, based on our understanding, only necessary budget appeals should be, um, the kind of appeals that are submitted, uh, when we open up the, the process to, to begin receiving those appeals from departments. Basically, that means that any appeals that are, uh, based off of a department, uh, thinking they don't, they don't have the necessary funding to run their, uh, department effectively. And just to provide a, a really high-level overview based off of our, uh, how we're going to approach the recommended budget is we know we're going to need to be addressing a lot of growth, uh, across many different county departments. So, uh, our goal is basically to address that growth as efficiently as possible, and I know sometimes that means us asking further questions from departments to really try to get an understanding on, uh, based off of their needs, not just new needs, but also, um, the existing, uh, the existing funding that's being utilized by each department. And again, this is all with the goal of trying to maintain a, um, a low tax rate. But, um, but with that, if there's, uh, uh, any other direction that Commissioner's Court has as to how we need to approach the recommended budget, I'd be happy to, uh, to hear that at this time. Otherwise, that does conclude, uh, the presentation.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, Judge.
Yes, please.
I would suggest that we look at, uh, not having reclasses this year due to the potential overhaul of our pay and job descriptions that we're looking at going, uh, going through with the consultant firm. Um, obviously, I, I'm not suggesting that we don't add jobs because that needs to be, obviously, with the growth that we're having, there's probably some necessities there. Um, but unfortunately, from what I've, the few years I've been here, the short few years, it seems like reclasses are used a lot of times just to get raises for the employees because that's the way our system is set up. So I, that's just a suggestion I have and, and, uh, so obviously, I want feedback from the other court members because this is not a one-man show. It's just a suggestion. Excellent, excellent, uh, overview. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Members, any other comments?
Well, I don't mind looking at them, but I'm not opposed to saying no to reclasses either.
I think it, as we're going through a process, I think we may not want to.
Right.
Do things significantly, but if there is a significant job change in a particular one, I'm willing to look at on case-by-case basis.
I agree with that.
Thematically, I understand what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other comments, Commissioner Falconer?
Yes, um, so, uh, Ryan, do you, we've talked a little bit, do you expect, um, for this budget year to see a, uh, potential pilot on some of that, or what, or anybody else's thoughts about?
Yeah, so I, I don't, you know, no matter what we decide as a group, as a body, um, it wouldn't be able to affect the twenty-twenty-five year.
Right, right.
Obviously, because of the amount of time and.
Right.
This necessity on, on doing the kind of, uh, taking a certain area and doing them first to make sure that we're, uh, happy with the, the type of work that's being done. So, yeah, you would, I wouldn't see any, uh, changes for the twenty-twenty-five year. I think that we would be looking at the twenty-twenty-six budget year.
Got it.
Primarily.
Very good.
Trying to be conservative.
I've got another question too.
Yes, sir.
Alejandro, on the, um, presentation of your recommended budget on July twenty-third, right? Um, well, well, Commissioner's Court, or, uh, when will that budget be released before your, before your presentation or on that day, or what's the plan for?
Uh, yes, sir. So right now, we're, uh, expecting to release that information, uh, to send it over on July sixteenth.
Okay.
Uh, so our recommended budget presentation will be on July twenty-third, a week after that. And the reason for that is because, um, just the way we need to time, uh, budget appeals, we need to have sufficient time to receive budget appeals and, uh, review that information and present it to court, uh, so that court has enough time to review that information before the first budget workshops on July, um, thirtieth. So, uh, that information will be released on July sixteenth, and the recommended budget presentation will be on July twenty-third.
And the Commission's Court will get it before you.
Well, that's a, yes.
That's what we're.
So when will, when will, so that's really what I was asking. I want to make sure, so when is?
When the court gets in.
Uh, on July, July sixteenth.
Okay, and, and it goes.
About a week.
And when will, it's a, and then it goes public if it, public on the twenty-third?
Yes, sir. We'll post it, um, on the website on July twenty-third.
That's what I was wanting. Very good, thank you.
And I, I would ask that, um, even though you're gonna be going through and giving your, uh, recommended budget, I, I would, I would like to still have from any of the departments what they were still asking for, even though you, your department said that's not.
Before it got cut.
Whatever you want, yeah, before it's, before it's totally done.
Yeah, redlined version.
If that makes sense. Um, I don't know if I just gave you clear direction or not, but I hope, I hope, does that make sense?
Uh, regarding budget, uh, the full budget requests?
That is correct.
Oh, so, so we will, um, we are planning to release, uh, the full, uh, budget requests at some point in, um, the first week of May.
Okay.
Uh, so we'll send a link out to Commissioner's Court, and we'll compile all requests, uh, for your review.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Perfect. Okay, any other comments? All right, good, thank you. Nice job.
Yep, excellent job, fellas.
All right, let's go to seven B, which is approval of the Budgetman Request 100750 for the county jail to transfer five hundred thousand non-departmental out-of-county prisoner contingency to out-of-county prisoner expense to cover the cost of inmates housed in the Monta, Cook, Johnson, and Parker County jails for the month of December due to a shortage of detention officers.
Excuse me, Judge. Will we have a motion and second on the approval?
Well, we can go back to that with an approval. The chair will move, uh, for adoption of the budget presentation on seven A's, seconded by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Let's go back to eight B, which is the out-of-county prisoner expense. Do we have a motion for approval?
Have a move.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Seven B.
Seven B.
Yeah.
Thank you.
He's trying to jump ahead of us.
Seven C is approval of the Budgetman Request 100770 for the Sheriff's Office to increase revenues and allocate expenditures in the amount of thirty-seven thousand three hundred sixty-two dollars in the county jail as part of the contract support to cover the cost of maintenance repairs for the jail kitchen, equipment, and any appropriate action.
Move to approve?
Second.
By Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven D, approval of Budgetman Request 100780 for the Tax Assessor Collector Officer to transfer four thousand six hundred fifteen dollars from Technology Software Services to Countywide Technology, Technology Software Services. The funds will be used to purchase a smart sheet software for tracking transactions and monitor data in multiple tax office locations. Chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, next is seven E, approval of Budgetman Request 100800 for emergency management to increase revenues and allocate expenditures in the amount of one hundred thirty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars for the Office of the Governor's Citizens' Emergency Response Team grant for the purchase of a deployable family assistance shelter and victim services training trailer. Chair move for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excuse me, motion carries unanimously. Next is seven F, approval of Budgetman Request 100810 for the Tax Assessor Collector Officer to transfer thirty-five thousand three hundred, thirty-five thousand six hundred fifty-seven dollars from tax statements to Technology Software Services fund is needed to cover the usage fees for the five-nine system based on an increase to constituent call volume.
Bill move.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? Michelle, did you want to talk about the system and its utilization? You were here today, so I wanted to see if you wanted to speak to that. Thank you for being here, ma'am.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Certainly, I'd be happy to talk about it. Um, we have been stunned. We had no idea, um, how many constituent calls we would be receiving. When we first started this process, um, all that we were able to utilize was our reports out of the ICD reporting that, uh, was through Cisco. And so we had to anticipate and estimate how many calls we thought, we thought might be coming in, uh, to process. Well, we have just blown it out of the water. So, and even still, even still, with as many calls as we're now processing, there are still some calls we cannot get to because we have this opened up, this opened up system that is processing thousands upon thousands upon thousands of calls. Remarkably, and, and you probably read it in, in the documentation, but I just would like to point out that, um, in just, in just three and a half months, from the end of October, whenever we first went live.
Did you read it?
To January thirty-first, we took in a hundred and sixty-three thousand calls. A hundred and sixty-three thousand calls, out of which we were able to answer a significant amount of calls from people who wanted to get through to talk to an, to an individual. But the system answered the vast majority of those calls. The vast majority. So, um, in comparison to, uh, two years ago, we took in for the whole year, a little over ninety thousand calls. So in three and a half months, we almost doubled what we took in for a whole year. The other thing is that this system is able to record our phone calls, which has been very, very beneficial. I've already had a couple of occasions in the last two weeks where I've been able to go back and listen to, my team and I have been able to go back and listen to the recording of the call to confirm what our staff said, what the customer said, how to manage that particular issue that, that came up, how to address it. I was literally able to go and say, our team said this, you said that, our team said this, you said that, this is what happened. Another occasion where our team said this, you said that. Okay, well, you know what? That was a training issue for us. And so it has just been remarkable, absolutely remarkable.
Michelle, how about, have you had any complaints about people having to talk to a, a robot or?
None that has come to me. I, I asked, especially after we first got started.
Right.
I, I went and asked my staff, okay, what are we getting? What are we hearing? What do people say? And no, to my knowledge and to our knowledge, no one has complained about, uh, the system answering for them. I've called in after-hours myself. This is the other thing too, the, the really cool thing about this. I'm kind of getting geeky here because it's just such a cool system. But the other thing is that this is able to answer phone calls after hours. Now, we're still developing the system. We're, it's gonna take a full year to really fully implement this in the way that I think it can be. But the awesome thing is that after-hours, they're limited, but there is information that can be shared after hours. So, for instance, I, I just ran a report yesterday because I wanted to see, um, in, in, uh, just since the beginning of, of, uh, February, how many after-hour calls we had. We had a little over thirteen thousand calls that came in out of, in just one, we're not even through the whole month. Halfway through the month. And keep in mind, the, the work hours include, are included in this. We had a little over thirteen thousand calls that came in just in the last, uh, what's today, thirteen, twelve days? Out of which about twenty-nine hundred calls were after-hours. So people are getting assistance all day long.
Good.
Very good.
That's great. Well, good, thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank y'all very much, appreciate it.
Glad it's working well.
All right, thank you, Michelle. With a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Michelle. I'm very glad it's working out for you. Next is eight A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is for recording purposes only, Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have three new hires in the county clerk, one new hire in adult probation, three new hires in juvenile probation, four new hires in the sheriff's office, three of those are detention officer one, one new hire in the tax office, one demotion in the tax office, and two promotions in the tax office. That's it for this week.
Next is ten A. This is approval of the Rocky Top Phase One final plat, this is a hundred and thirteen This is approval of the Rocky Top Phase 1 final plat, this is 113 residential lots and three non-residential lots. This is 170.536 acres located in Precinct 4.
Judge, I'm delighted to receive your approval.
Perfect, we have a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14B, approval of the request to hold a public hearing on March 19, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. for the replat of Nelson Editions, this is Lot 1, Block 8. This is 6.41 acres located in Commissioner Precinct 4. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We've already done 13A. Let's go to 13B, reports from the Denton County Juvenile Board regarding inspection and certification of the Denton County Pre-Adjudication Detention Facility, the Post-Adjudication Secure Facilities, and suitability of the quarters and facilities by the Juvenile Court is presented for recording purposes only. The chair move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 13C, approval of space allocation to include relocating the County Administration Department from the Denton County Administrative Courthouse to the Holcher Building B. And two, the Department of Transportation Engineering from the Marion Jim Horn Government Center to the Holcher Building and any appropriate action.
Moved to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next is 13D, approval of space allocation of the county judge's chief administrator to Office 3108, the Commissioner, Precinct 2, to Office 3142, and aid the Commissioners Court to Offices 3104 and 3124, the Denton County Administrative Courthouse, and any appropriate action.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14A, approval of change order number three to the contract agreement for the construction services between Denton County, Texas and Accelerated Critical Path Incorporated for the reconstruction of the Hackberry Creek Park Road to include 120 additional days and move $43,200 from contingency all along 6875559030 Hackberry Park Road. This is the 2017 PI bond funds and 83-75559010 Hackberry Park Road. This is the 2019 API and refunding bonds.
Move to approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14B, approval amendment one to the agreement for architectural services between Denton County, Texas, the owner and architects design group, ADG Incorporated, the architect for Denton County Emergency Operations Centers, RFQ 22-2678, in amount of $4,960,000 for Phase 2 and Phase 3 services plus reimbursable expenses for all three phases, not to exceed $32,500. This is the schematic design, design development, design for construction, bidding, final estimates, and duties during construction with funding to come from building projects, this is the 2019 API and refunding bonds, the emergency SRV building project, all along item 8375559020 is recommended by Denton County Purchasing Director.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say, yes.
Judge, if I might just say, I think you all, we talked about the EOC obviously a lot recently, and we're excited to get this project moving, and we'll certainly be giving you updates as we get through that accelerated process and let you know how it's going.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14C, approval of the memorandum of understanding between Texas Division of Emergency Management in Denton County, Texas, where the Denton County Department of Emergency Management will participate in the Texas Emergency Management Assistant Team Program and any appropriate action.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14D, approval of renewal number one to the placement agreement between Fast Psych LLC and Denton County, Texas to provide tele-psychiatry services for inmates in the Denton County Jail for a period of one year with an option of four additional one-year terms at the discretion of the Denton County Commissioners Court. Weekly cost for eight clinic, clinical hours is $1,240,000, totaling $64,480 per year. Funding from prisoner medical expense line item number 0145106015. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14E, approval of the fiscal year 2024 SEVEN's maintenance plan between the Office of the Attorney General and the Denton County, Texas for the OAG statewide automated victim notification service and for the statewide automated victim notification service, the AppRus Safety, and the VINE Service Agreement for annual maintenance of the SEVEN's system.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14E, approval of one, the letter agreement to provide public improvement district services from Wildan Financial Services to Denton County, Texas for the formation and first-year administration of the Green Metal Public Improvement District and the Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District. And two, exempt contract for a personal service with Wildan Financial Services from the requirement established by the Texas Local Government Code, Section 262.023, under Texas Local Government Code, Section 262.024A4. And three, authorize the Denton County Judge to sign a contract of employment with Wildan Financial Services and any appropriate action.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14G, approval of one, assigning legal representation on behalf of Denton County, Texas as bond counsel for occurring and future Denton County and public improvement districts and to include, but not limited to, Green Metals Public Improvement District and Denton County Commissioner Precinct 1, and Tabor Ranch Public Improvement District and Denton County Commissioner, Precinct 4, to attorney Bob Dransville, the law firm of Norton Rose Fulbright, LLP. And two, exempt contract of employment with attorney Bob Dransville and the law office of Norton Rose Fulbright, LLP, from the requirement established by the Texas Local Government Section, Local Government Code, Section 262.023, if applicable. And three, authorize Denton County Judge to sign a contract of employment with attorney Bob Dransville and the law firm of Norton Rose Fulbright, LLP.
Moved to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's go to number 17, community updates, and we'll start with Commissioner Precinct 4.
Thank you, Judge. Judge, I have one thing for today. I apologize to this gentleman, I'm going to boot up his last name, Patrick DiCrenenzio. How does he say that? Do you know? Don? No? Okay, I feel better. This gentleman began his career as a volunteer fireman in Salina in October 2009. He became Salina's first retired firefighter after his shift on Friday, February 9. He is a U.S. Marine Corps veteran and an employee of the American Americans. Congratulations to the first retiree of the Salina Fire Department. That's all I've got.
That's great.
Thanks, Judge.
As the son of a retired firefighter, I'm glad to hear that.
There you go.
All right. Commissioner Falconer.
Thank you, Judge. There's quite a few things going on with Valentine's Day and with taxes coming up soon. So in the colony, I've got, again, the income tax preparation help, and that is at the library, 13th, 20th, and 27th, from 10:30 to 2. And then I think people probably are aware that we have a total solar eclipse coming this year, and there's going to be a countdown to that celestial wonder at the Colony Public Library on the 15th at 6:30. And then their 19th Annual Sweetheart Ball on the 17th from 5 to 9 at 5909 Stone Creek Drive, and in Carrollton, Fly Fishing on the 24th at the Rosemead Rec Center, the History of Soul Food on the 24th from 1 to 2 at the Josie Ranch Library. And then in Frisco, we've got the February Calaboose Concert on the 22nd at 7:00 p.m. at the Heritage Center, and also Woven Together, Fly Together on the 24th at the Heritage Center at 1:00 p.m. And Little Elm has the Farmer's Market at the Lawn on the 24th at 10:00 a.m. And that's on the lawn in Little Elm, and that's all I have.
Perfect. Commissioner Mitchell.
And Flower Mount, Flower Mount, Farmer's Market is still going on Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The library, Spring Gardening Series, February 12, 1926. The Denton County Master Garden Association is going to be hosting these series. Fat Tuesday parties today at 11:00 a.m., and I think we already missed that, at 27:01 Wednesday drive.
It's still, we can still make it.
You can make it.
We still...
You can still make it.
You can make Fat Tuesday.
Okay, that's the Flower Mount Senior Center, okay?
We all won't qualify.
Pretty soon you will.
If I'm lucky.
Income tax preparations in Louisville. The United Way of Denton County offers this preparation for anyone with an income up to $60,000, 15th, 17th, 22nd, 24th, and 29th. And Becoming One, the time is always right to do what is right, and exhibition also today from 10 to 5 at the Louisville Grand Theater. A Chance to Dance, Sweetheart Social, as February 16, 5 to 8 p.m. It's designed for youth and adult special needs community members. A Chance to Hike on February 17 at Leila in Louisville. Louisville Grant Songwriting Workshop, I'm not going to attend that. It's February 17, 10 to 4. I think I'm past that, I can't do that. Saturday, it's cabin, Louisville, Leila, at 12 to 3:00 p.m., a time of informal tool with volunteers available to guide and answer questions. Also Neighborhood Grant Workshop, February 20 at Louisville Library from 6 to 7:30 p.m. And Tri-City Neighborhood Summit. It's going to be Louisville Capel and Flower Mount. Various sessions will be available to build stronger neighborhoods and communities. It's going to be at the Thrive in Louisville. Please govern yourself accordingly.
All right, Commissioner Edmondson.
Good morning. I'm going to do reverse alphabetical order today, see if y'all are paying attention.
All right, let's do it.
Let's talk about Trophy Club. On the 24th, they're going to have cars and coffee at HG Supply Company. This is great classic cars, and you get sip your favorite coffee. That'll be the 24th, 9 to 11 in the morning. In Justin, they're going to have a United Development Code Open House, so their residents can learn about current development regulation and then speak with staff and other community members. Black History Month is being celebrated in several ways in Denton. For example, the 50-plus Black History Month program will be on February 23 from noon to 2:00 p.m. at the American Legion Hall Senior Center. And then on the 24th, from 10 to 12 at the MLK Rec Center, there will be a keynote speaker, Patrick Powers, and the celebration will include music, poetry, and more. So I think we've got a really good time coming for Black History Month. And then Denton is also holding a camp expo, which is where they're going to talk about all the different kinds of camps that they offer in the city of Denton. So if y'all are into camping, please go. That'll be from 10 to 3 on the 17th at the City Center.
Very good. I would like to remind everybody under item 18, there'll be no Commissioners Court meeting on the week of, for February 20th, no Commissioners Court meeting. All right, let's go back to executive session. We have a couple of items here. Let's go to 15A, Texas Government Code 5510711A, consultation with attorney in a closed